Second.
On the motion CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. Grant Cole has one more. Z seventeen twenty-nine, Ram Real Estate Investments, eight ten Harrison Street. The applicant or representative here?
Yeah, give me a second.
You've got two seconds. Let's go. Counselor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming. Wasn't expecting to be called this early, but thank you. Appreciate that. I represent a couple gentlemen from Ram Realty Investments LLC, Matthew Kinch, Tori Calaver. They own the property at eight Harrison Street at Quinte Point. The site itself is about eighty-two hundred square foot site located in a Residence B zoning district and currently approved by a non-conforming single-family residence. My clients are proposing to add a second home, which will be connected to the existing single-family residence, as well as just expanding, adding a dormer, dormer roofs to the existing single-family home as well. So again, the property is located in a Residence B zoning district, which does allow for, you know, multi-family residences. Okay? They are adding just this one second unit to that. They will be providing four parking spaces to the home as well. So important for me to point out-
They're adding four or they're gonna have four?
There'll be four parking spaces to the rear of the new home with driveway, one single driveway for access to the rear of the property. Those places, those spaces will be conforming with respect to size of those spaces as well as setbacks for both the home itself as well as the property lines. The home, you know, further, you know, meets all the dimensional requirements in this Residence B district. It meets, it will meet the FAR, the two homes combined. It will meet all setbacks, you know, other than the non-conforming setback for the existing home. Lot size per unit, frontage, open space, height, and parking, as I, as I indicated. With me this evening, I do have both my clients, Mr. Calaver and Mr. Kinch, as well as our civil engineer, Scott Henderson. You know, Scott has designed, and he'll, I don't want to get too much, I get sometimes comments, the attorney's gonna want too much about stuff we don't understand.
Can I do that?
Yeah. So I'll let him speak with respect to those things. For the records, Scott Henderson Henderson is all things, Rob said the civil engineer of the project.
Enter.
What was that?
Enter.
Quinte, Mass, one forty-four Washington Street. So as Rob said, we have an existing single-family home on the property on the right-hand side. This is effectively a double lot that existed in common ownership. So it's about twice the size of most of the lots up and down the street. The proposal is to add a second attached unit to this existing home and then add a second story via a shed dormer on the second floor to this unit to add square footage. We have an existing curb cut that's sort of in the center of the lot now. Now, we're gonna relocate that to the left side to provide a single driveway access up the side of the site to four parking spaces at the rear to screen those from the road. There is in the existing condition a shed and a detached garage in the rear of the property. Those will both be demolished and removed. In total, we're looking at a net increase of impervious area, just shy of seven hundred square feet. Currently, there are no stormwater controls on the property and we're proposing roof infiltration to capture runoff from both, both roofs, the roofs of both units into the backyard to infiltrate those into the ground. We've gone through full review with the city engineer and received approval. The board should have a letter from the city engineer noting that. And as Rob said, and there's nothing that we're looking for, any sort of variance or anything for parking or any of the layout, and other utilities are fairly standard.
What do you have for the outside of the building? What's going on the outside of that building?
We're rendering here from the architect. The architect was unable to attend tonight. So the existing structure here, we're adding that shed dormer and then the new unit, this comfortable design enassing.
What's on the outside of the building? What are you putting there? Flatboard, vinyl?
It'll be vinyl siding.
Are you gonna use acoustical? Are you gonna use the nice ones or just straight plain vinyl? Are you gonna use like the impressions or?
Yeah, I'll have an impression. I have a wood grain look, but in vinyl siding.
So you're just using regular vinyl? Did I use an impression?
Correct.
That, a three-tier, they look like real shingles?
Correct. This'll just be your standard vinyl side.
You know, when you're building a house brand-new like that, why can't you make the front of it with impressions? Make it a nice-looking building in the front at least instead of vinyl. You just don't get it for the cost. It'd have that look five times better than wood on that street. And I mean, you're building something in the neighborhood.
Sure. I think there'll be some consideration given there as well. I think, I think the material they're using is certainly, you know, kind of a maintenance-free, you know, material.
It is, they all are. But what is, is it so much per square foot more, probably three times the cost, put in front of the buildings? Not a ton of money when you're building two buildings that size. To put impressions in front, make them look like they're shingles, but they're plastic and it just makes the neighborhood look a lot better. And it makes that project look a lot better than vinyl siding.
Seen the cedar impression.
Yeah. Vinyl siding blows my mind. It's just like, it's, it's just, I don't know, people build something brand-new for it. I could see covering a house, just getting it over with, flipping it, whatever you're gonna do with it. And I don't know if you guys are gonna flip this or not, and there's a difference, but the people out of behind are gonna be there and I think it'd be nice to have something nice on the outside.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think, you know, all of that was, was taken into consideration, you know. This is not, you know, trying to push the envelope at all. You know, it's an eighty-two hundred square foot site. They wanted to comply, they wanted to, you know, build something that would, you know, kind of fit in with the rest of the neighborhood, you know, with respect to the style, the size of these homes. The existing is a two-bedroom. Obviously, the, the one they're building is a three-bedroom, because that's what, that's what sells, you know, three bedrooms today. But I think the size overall, you know, they want that kind of stay in conformity.
Did you tell me you're gonna put cedar impressions in the farmer's building?
Can't make that call. I mean, certainly, you know, they'll take under advisement and consider it. Would it be something you guys would consider?
I have not used them before, so I'll just look into how the builder can contain them and get them hung and if they fit within the budget.
Same place where you're gonna buy vinyl?
I'd be happy to use cedar impressions if they fit within our budget.
My answer, if you guys would make-
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we, I did speak with, you know, Counselor Cole as well. We did have a neighborhood meeting because of, I think, because of the size of the project. However, obviously, notice was sent out to many of the neighbors, you know, for this hearing. There were, I understand there's a few neighbors here tonight, a couple questions I have answered, you know, for them. Certainly, there'll be some more questions for you with some, or some comments. But again, we're requesting to do this is really just a finding. You know, again, if this proposal will not be substantially more detrimental than what's existing today. We don't think it is, you know, none of the relief we have to seek for setbacks and FAR and parking, this is not in a way where they meet, where they meet everything.
Thank you, Counsel. Any questions?
How do you propose to split them, to sell them independently?
Like, you know, for these two, because they are connected, they will have to go through, you know, condominium. You know, and they will be condominiums. Townhouses, more or less. You know, they, they look like single-family homes, so again, fit in with the neighborhood, but they will be condominiums.
Thank you, Counsel.
Do you have a question? No? Thank you. So anyone wanna speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? Close.
Thank you.
I gotta hit the DPW there. We do the above referenced project and have no comments. So anyone opposed or undecided, step forward, state name and address. And why don't we just line up, which is a bunch of them. Anyone wants to speak out and just run down?
Okay. My name is George Folsom, twenty-four Curtis Avenue. Been there over sixty years. Okay? The street, Harrison Street, I live on the corner of Curtis and Harrison. My garage comes out on Harrison Street, behind my house. Now, it's bad enough the way it is now, but Harrison Street turns into a dead-end street. There's an awful lot of two-family houses on that street. Believe me when I tell you, the street is much narrower than Curtis Avenue is. And they're constantly parking their cars. Every one of those houses have driveways. For some reason, I'm seeing reason, people are parking on the street and it becomes a horror show. If anything bad ever happens down there, I know I've seen ambulances come in, have to wait to get to houses, fire trucks, forget that, okay? But that, that street is heavily traveled. Now, I see them gonna build a house, the house that they're talking about. I knew the people lived there for the last hundred years. Anyway, I don't have any problem with them putting a dormer on the existing house. That's either here or there. But adding that house, attaching it to this other house is only a way of getting to a situation they can't build because they don't have the land to build that house by itself. So to get around it, they've connected it to the other house. And that leaves the property on the other side. They have to take out the garage as a thing to get parking. And here's the biggest joke of all. The driveway is right in front of my driveway of my garage. When I come out, what's gonna happen is there's gonna be cars from that, other properties, not parking the parking lot inside the back of the thing, they're gonna park on the streets. Why do I say that? Because if you look at the map, you have what they're building, the driveway is ten feet wide. So if there's five or six cars in those buildings, what are they gonna take time, turns to come out one at a time? They're gonna park on the street. You can't, and the thing is that if they park on the street, I'm gonna be the guy that calls up every other day and says, send a towing truck down here.
There you go.
Because I'm gonna get out. One of the things I have a problem with, my wife has leukemia, I have to be able to leave and go into Boston at different times. If they're in my way, there's gonna be a lot of problems. I just, I don't understand, well, I know why they did it. I can understand that. The man that had the house gave it to his daughter, who in turn gave it to the grandson, he renovated the interior beautifully on the existing house and then he sold it. Well, he's evidently in the business for making money and he's done the right thing, okay? But when this came in, when they came in with that, I can understand, they're putting a dormer and the property was all taken care of, new driveways, everything was done perfectly. And they saw that and I'm sure he made a nice profit out of it. He needed that or that, but then I, I can see a tremendous problem with the traffic on that street. It's bad enough now, because everybody has two or three cars in all those houses. And you can, I can stand out of the corner of my eye and it's like being out on a Washington Street. It's a steady line of traffic. So I'm telling, I'm telling you now, if he, if they do this and put that second house on, there's gonna be a lot of problems.
Thank you, Folsom.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Pitts. I live at fifteen Harrison Street. I'm opposed to the second home for the fact that, number one, safety, ambulances and fire trucks will never get down that street because George is right, they will park. A good example, Christmas night, I'm a nurse, I work twelve hours. I try to get home Christmas night, cars were parked on both sides of the street, people were visiting. A guy came out, started screaming, yelling at me, refused to move the vehicle right away. I couldn't even get down Harrison Street. I had to call the police and to be able to get into my house, and the guy was harassing me so bad. So I'm thinking, you're gonna add another house with a tiny little driveway, those people aren't gonna be able to get in and out, there's a tiny driveway there. And there's absolutely no way, I've got enough coops bar I'm already dealing with, you can't even get down Lebanon Street on a Friday and Saturday night. The police just close their eyes to it, it's insane. So I call them all the time, they do nothing. So now we're gonna add this on to Harrison Street, the traffic, this one guy, every night, the parks a black car on the street. You can barely get down the street, either day or night. So if you're gonna add this, you're gonna add four more cars, George is right, you're gonna be all over the street. And the police are gonna come down, close their eyes and do nothing about it, as usual. So, so that's why I'm opposed.
Big dragon?
No, they have a, in coops bar, forget it, they just completely close their eyes and drive by. They think I'm not gonna call all the time. I've been doing this for years. And because I drive a Hummer and I'm supposed to be punished, you know? So anyway, so that's why I'm opposing. I'm all for one home, fine, but two homes and four cars, there's no way. And I could barely get on my driveway as it is now if there's a car parked across my driveway at that house. So that's my issue.
Tom Perper, I'm at twenty-seven Harrison Street, been there for over sixty years. Harrison Street is a narrow street, always had parking problems. They're making improvements to the forefield, which is gonna draw more cars down there, or multi-families at one end. And this only has a single driveway. And with two families, that's gonna force some of the guests to park on the street because they don't wanna get trapped in a single driveway. I'm opposed to this project because of the parking.
Thank you, Mr. Perper. Anyone else?
Hi, Sandra Muji, I'm at sixteen Harrison Street. I'm not gonna reiterate the same thing, but the parking, of course, is the immediate concern.
What's your last name?
Muji, I'm Mujsia. My other concern, I am the house directly next door, what's in the property line is eighteen inches off of that property line, or the house itself. So I guess I do have a concern that now my backyard is gonna face parking spaces. So I don't know, I, you know, I didn't have time to find out, is it gonna be fence or whatever, but, you know, going from having a backyard facing grass and backyard now to having parking spaces, and of course, the biggest problem is the parking as it exists on Harrison Street. I'm opposed.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposing on the side? Counselor?
Wait, don't hear a quote, correct. John Rutherford, two Grand Mall Road, real quick. What's it on, like a foot, foot and a half from the other side right now? It's like from, from the right side of the house?
Seven feet.
It's seven feet? And you adding up, are you going up on that side too?
Uh, no. The gable won't stay the same, it just, shed dormers up the front and back.
But it is residential, we are residential B though?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just gonna simply say, moratorium, residential B, this is a great reason why we need to, you know, we're gonna keep getting developers that keep coming in here until we fix this.
Wouldn't apply to both of them.
Whoa, 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 all right.
Well, the main thing is, is this, this is just too big. They're all small, single-family houses on that street. This does not fit in at all with that street and the neighbors are clearly against it, so I would ask that the board please vote this project down. Thank you.
Thank you, John. John, have you been on that street?
Have I been there?
Yeah.
Not tonight, I wasn't.
Is there anyone else opposing on the side, Counselor?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this will be the last time you see me this evening. I promise. Just to echo the sentiment of what was shared here this evening, Mr. Perper, Ms. Muji, Mr. Folsom, and Ms. Pitts, I mean, long-time residents, we live here. I'll be honest with you, this, this project never excited me in the, in the first place. Quite honestly, I don't really see the value that it brings to the neighborhood. But what really kind of raised my antenna, and I appreciate you, I appreciate you asking and advocating for aesthetic improvements to any, whether it's Quinte Point or Penn Hill section of my district, I appreciate that. The rebuttal of, you know, whether or not it fits in my budget, I just feel is like completely unacceptable. And I've kinda thought about-
I appreciate you.
Take it under advisement. Take it under advisement. My wife would love to travel around the world. You know my answer to hers?
Take it under advisement.
Take it under advisement. So, I mean, I, I don't know. Without running the risk of reiterating what was already said here by the residents, it's a tight neighborhood, Mr. Chairman, you were down there, I know you do your diligence on every item that comes in this agenda.
Yeah.
If that's not done properly, there's nowhere to put any overflow. That's an already existing problem. So, false, false.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond, real quick, I know you have a, you have a tight agenda and I understand-
Yes, I know you've been dying to drop in and-
Thank you for letting me. With, I'll respond to Mrs. Muji first, because she's certainly the most impacted, she'll be right next door. What there's up to, to the border between seven feet, you know, to her, to the property line is the existing home. My clients are willing to do almost anything. She'd like to see that, whether it be a fence, the vegetation, that would be fine. Because yes, and that's what you may see, you know, but they have very intention of doing some landscaping and nice border on, on really, on really both sides. With respect to the parking and the issues on Harrison Street, that's how these things are approached, you know, in development. You're looking at those things, you're trying to pull all parking off of the street. My clients have done that here, you know? They, they are building this thing and are complying with the parking that's required. What we're seeking here is a finding. That's all we're seeking. Everything is by rights, you know, with respect to the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. This is a finding, you know? The board finding that this particular proposal will not be substantially more detrimental than what's existing today. You know, we're providing the required parking, you know? Will there be guests? There's a guest for any home, you know? One unit addition to this property is not gonna exacerbate the conditions down on Harrison Street.
And I know you say that, Counsel, I'm one person, I have three vehicles. That's me. Just me. It's just life. That's life today. People have more than one car. They have a truck, they have a car, they have motorcycles, I have-
I'm not asking for a lease with parking.
I'm not saying it, I'm just saying, no, no. But, but, you know, what, what they're saying is you're putting in another, you know, another three bedrooms and you get a couple of, five bedrooms, what does that equal in really cash? Oh, six? Five? But you're, you're going by the order. I get that. I get what you're saying, believe me, I get it.
I just wanted to point out the board's role here, you know? That it's a finding, it's not dimensional relief, that we're seeking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I didn't get the answer that I wanted in the beginning, which makes me think, I don't know what else could happen in that lot, really. And right now, I'm not, I'm not comfortable voting on this right now. I think, maybe they can come back with two splits, maybe a house on the left, house on the right, I don't know, and, and better parking. Parking behind the house, I hate it, I just hate it, I do hate it, I just hate it. It just don't work, it just doesn't work. It's like, I wonder, no, you might not. We've already passed that. No thanks, but it's our turn. I, I just, I don't feel comfortable the way that layout is, even though for that piece of property, it's probably the best you're gonna get down here for that piece of property, seriously? But the parking, I hate it, I just hate it. Driving behind the building makes it tough. People going in the house twenty minutes, they don't. They're going for an hour, I'm gonna go up, they don't bother you, it just happens.
Well, you know, what I find amazing about this city is there's so many streets like this street all over the city. And I go to the property this morning and I'm looking at it and I realize I didn't park close enough myself and I'm blocking the street. Okay, I'm blocking the street, which is not a good thing to do. And you think, well, it's a small street, no one's gonna really come down the street, right? Now, what's the tip? They always do. There always someone's coming by. The city is twenty-four seven these days, this is the way it is. I don't mind parking behind the building here, because I think, you know, I, I think that's okay.
If they do.
If, if the, if the angle, I haven't really seen, for example, the plan, do we have enough turning radius that could get them to turn?
There is. It's plenty, and Scott can give them a little further, do we have the compliant eighteen-foot parking spaces in there?
In forty-three.
So there is plenty of room for not only vehicles, but also a snowplow, you know, for some vehicles as well to pull in air.
What I would, I think what I would like to say, just, yeah, just one person, I would like to see, you guys figure out what you're gonna put on the front of these buildings that Chairman mentioned in your budget?
I've consulted with my clients, they will do the cedar impression.
I, I don't understand why you have to have them connected, really. Why do you have to have them connected?
Well, they, they looked at, you know, doing separate single-family homes, you know, and because of the width of the entire lot being, and being able to have a dedicated driveway for each, made it, made it difficult or impossible to do that, you know? So this is really an expansion of a non-conforming residence, you know, seeking the finding. If we were to subdivide the lots into two single-family homes, there'd be a lot of dimensional relief that would need to be requested. Considering it's a Residence B district, you know, this is, this is permitted, you know, to do it just, just that way, you know? But, Mr. Chairman, if it comes down to aesthetics, that's on the table.
I think it's important and we're gonna start looking at this stuff, from not having people build stuff that just, and walk away.
I agree. People have different tastes, you know, some like the siding.
Besides the dollar shop, what happened down there, what they did, it was like bizarro, bizarro, a hundred million dollars. I'm looking at that and I go, oh my God.
But, Mr. Gobais, you know, the turning radius is there, you know, for, for easy access for, for a teenager.
Just they gotta do with it.
Well, do you think we should, okay, no, pardon? No, I'm just saying, do you think we should bring this back and maybe see? I'm not sure what we're gonna see.
No, maybe you can go down and look at the lot again, make sure you get what you know what you have there. Because I tell you, there is a lot of two-family houses, some bigger buildings, and this is not a big building. One, and I'm gonna attach it, it's not gonna be a big, big building as like three stories. It's not, it's not. It's probably the best look for that lot, I agree. What's there? What's down there? What, what they're gonna build? Do you wrap the whole building and go up two stories? And make, take every square inch that they can?
They could do that.
And make three units all the way up and just redo the whole thing?
Which they have a right to do.
Right. You could move this building and you could do that, you could put your six blocks in the back, you could move it over further, you could. For that place, that's probably the best looking building someone could come up with for that lot, I would say. You gotta build in a two-family residence, a Resident B. Now, you get two stories, the pitch of the roofs are beautiful, they're not, there's no seven-twelve roofs, they're looking at these big, yeah, peak roofs, A-frame roofs, and the height is there and everything. It's just comments.
Further, I, I agree, I'd like to look at it again from the residence perspective with the turning. When I was there yesterday, I, I passed it and I didn't go all the way down to the end, which is on me, I should. And I made a U-turn and two houses down, which I could barely accomplish. So I'd like to go back and look again.
You gotta go a little further down.
Yeah, I'd like to go back down and, and look. And, right, the parking for the field, is they, they pack on that side to use the field?
Right, exactly. The other side.
Well, the bit, the-
Yeah. The way that it's configured right now, if you're going down Harrison Street-
Yes.
Could basically catch, catch parking on that side of the clubhouse.
Okay.
For the playground, there's been iterations and talks about how they may or may not try to manufacture some new parking with the progress of the field, but still up in the air, right? Because concepts are just concepts in terms of-
Right, oh yeah, no, I agree, I just, I was curious if with the, with the work they're gonna do down there, if they include a parking on it.
It was, it's been talked about, but the parking primarily would be on the section of Nevada Road, actually, if you face toward the clubhouse. So if you're looking at the entrance, it would actually be at the right. They cut in some of the air and potentially don't- They cut in some of the air, potentially on Beechwood. What they'll end up doing on Harrison is nothing for my, my estimation as of right now. But it's a funding issue that we're kind of marking through, as you probably saw, the orange construction guns. I could bore you with details, but in any case, I get it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I know, you want to wait a couple of weeks.
I was there this week and I found it, it, it's a tight neighborhood. You're right, the parking seems awfully tight, but it's not a bad design, but yeah, I think it needs to be revisited as well.
Motion, what do you want? Two weeks, I'm not going to be here next meeting.
Let's go longer.
Four weeks?
Yeah.
You guys give us a sort of landscape plan.
Absolutely, yeah. And we could, yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll have my clients speak with Ms. Mucci as well, you know, her side. And I forgot the gentleman's name on the other side as well. And have a little more dialogue with respect to that and see what we could do for some landscape design on both those sides. And even in the rear as well. I know there's a fence in the rear of the property and there's proposed one on the driveway side, Mrs. Mucci's side as well. They could do a same, same fence on that side. We'll, we'll speak with her more as well.
April 25th, please.
This is Chairman, amount of the Z17 dash 29. Grand Real Estate Investment LLC for a area to buy and construct a single-family dwelling to attach the existing single-family dwelling. For a total of $2,000,000, on the premises number 810 Harrison Street. You could give a motion if you'd be here to make your.
Second. A motion CNN, on favor?
Opposed.
Come on. Chairman, that's tonight's agenda.
Thank you, have a good day.
It's Chris, Eric, it's mine. No, because she was here earlier to count the lawyer and I just don't like, he's already here. D17, 23, 101 Bellevue, 9911, Rob Mutt, Manny, Manager, Square Rock, LLC, Bavian, destructive foundation. Counselor. Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, Christopher Harrington, I represent Rob and Manny.